All right, at this time, if y'all please, we're gonna stand for a moment of prayer. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, the Lord, we are grateful that you blessed us with another day, dear Lord. Lord, be with us as we go through the Thanksgiving holidays. Be with our families and our friends, Lord, as we try to gather together and worship you and worship our kindness and love for one another. Be with us and direct us through this meeting today. Guide us in the path you would have us to go in your heavenly, sweet name, we pray. Amen. And while we're standing, Chris, would you please lead us in the place of allegiance?
In the place of allegiance, to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to item number three, amendments to the agenda. I have got a couple of amendments to the agenda, if y'all will just bear with me just for a second. Number one, Mr. Dunn is on item new business under C. I'd like to move him up above employee recognition for Mr. Dunn. If he has to leave early, he can get out. And then also, I would like to, in that place, as well as others under new business, we need to have a discussion, no action, but discussion under Sandy Bottoms Road, the closing of Sandy Bottoms Road and the possible closing of Pleasant Union Extension. So I'd like to move those two items under new business for discussion. Anybody got any issues with those?
What was the second one?
It was Sandy Bottoms, the closure of Sandy Bottoms Road and discussion on the closure of Pleasant Union Extension.
Thank you.
If that's acceptable to the board, I'd like to have a movement second to accept.
Second.
Have a movement second for the approval of the agenda. All in favor of number saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. Mr. Dunn, you are now, we're gonna let you go ahead in case you need to leave a little early.
Okay, thank you, and Robert, and thank you commissioners and everybody here. I come before you today to see if we can get some money to do some things with downtown. As you know, been trying to work on getting some Christmas lights and some sound in downtown. And we realized that the money that we were looking at was a little too high, and so we've sort of re-circled the wagon, if you will. And so what I'm asking for is there's an estimate in front of you, what particular agenda that we've sort of tried to look into, and that might be the sound. And I'll just be honest with you, what we can do with this is have some fun with the sound, with our parade for Christmas and the choir and so on and so forth, and then if we do do something from New York City down the road, I don't know if that's gonna happen or not. But anyway, it will eventually happen, but it would give us an opportunity to do something that's well, it's a good product and it's gonna do a good thing for us, in my opinion. To let y'all know, we'll say, all right, so what are we gonna do after this? We had some issues with the city, so I'm going before the merchants in downtown and asking for some money, so we're gonna do, ask for those people to get some lights. So with that, Robert, I have an estimate in front of y'all for the sound system, if y'all can help with that, I appreciate it, and for that, I'm gonna stand at that.
All right. Y'all have any questions to discuss to?
How soon are you looking to do this? Are you trying to get it immediately?
Well, I have, Becky, to be honest with you, I, Darren, if we do the sound system, he'll hop all over this. I know y'all have got some things y'all have to do, and so, to be honest with you, if we do everything, we'll try to get it done before December 1st, around that timeframe. So we don't have a long timeframe, but...
And this is just for the sound system?
This is just for the sound system. And by the way, Robert, let me back up here a minute. You wanted another bid. I didn't get another bid on lighting, I mean, on the sound system, but I did go to Cumming, Georgia, and meet with a company called Universal Concepts, just to get another opinion for lighting. By the way, it was about the same figure as the guy from the Viking, however, the Viking gentleman, he doesn't have the group to put the lighting in and place, but the Universal Concept does. If, I've got a set of lights here, about a set, this is what the lighting looks like. It's a LED light that they gave me to bring back, and they put this on top of the buildings. They also caulk it so it'll stay there. This is an LED lighting bulb, it costs eighty-five cents. So for example, if we wanted to do from my corner of my building all the way up to Wick's Supply, or Wick's Jewelry, it would be one continuous wire, there would not be multiple wires. So they form it to each configuration for each building. Now, if we went the other route, it's eight dollars and fifty cents a foot with a controller and a transformer, and that's not counting a labor, so it's very intensive, and I don't think that's the way we need to go. Initially, I think we need to take small steps. So I asked her what would be a proposal for that lighting, and she said from D.B. Carroll to West Main Street would be nine to ten thousand dollars, and to fifty-three would be six to seven thousand dollars. That's on the top of the buildings. And each building would have lights just on the top, it'd be uniform, it'd be something that I think the public would like, and give us some festivities to grow on in the future. So that's what I'm looking about going to do with down the road, if we can get some money from y'all and do the sound system.
Have you found out who would pay the power bill, the electric?
There, I asked the lady who, at Universal Concepts, we can switch something on the end of it where we can meter it, and we can divide it up amongst ourselves, we can see if the city wants to help pay for it, we can, the tenants, we can divide it up amongst ourselves.
But you're just asking the county at this time, just to help with the sound system?
Yes, sir.
And y'all gonna take, try to take care of the lighting?
Yes, sir. And I'll be honest with you, Robert, I've talked to six tenants, and I've already got almost halfway there.
The sound system that you want to produce here is gonna be totally on county courthouse property?
Yes, sir.
And then if they want to take it on down the street, it'd be somebody's priority to take it on down the street?
Yes, sir.
And would it be able to tap into that system where they could run it down the street? But what you're looking for most is just what's gonna stay on county property, which is the courthouse?
Yes, sir. There would be two speakers on the two giant trees, and then there would be a subwoofer in front of those two big trees and a planning, I don't know what you call it, two, there's two raised beds, and they would be in there. And of course, the audio, we had all that set up to y'all, so the person could be able to go inside and run it from there.
Where would they, where would he put, as I talked to him the other day, where is he gonna put his base of operation?
Uh, Darren, we'll have to get with y'all and make sure that that's acceptable to y'all.
So I guess I'm gonna have to kind of refer to Mr. Stansel for a second, the courthouse security. To run this thing, if he has to go inside the courthouse to do it overnight, what would that cause?
In order to follow within the court's security plan, it would require an officer to be able to be there and be present to escort him in and out, under the current court security, if it goes inside the building.
You know, as we saw that night, Robert, they were doing it with a phone, and I don't know, and again, I can get more details on that.
Well, you want, you want us just to table list, you can get some more details, or...
Well, I'd like to move on with it, but I can get some more details, of course, I know y'all need to know this tonight, but I, I know that he said that that would be inside, and you could bring it outside, I know he made that statement, but to what extent that was brought outside? I know the function that he had outside was the phone system would be able to do radio, he could do indoor radio on the sound system, he could, you know, he could hook it up to microphones to do other things like, you know, you have choirs out there singing for Christmas or whatever.
So what he had out there the other night was not?
That was pretty much it, except for, you know, putting a base or whatever inside your facility and then coming out and you just using...
Well, the loudness, the loudness wasn't there, I mean, you couldn't hear it, you could, you know, you could hear it over Wick's Jewelry, but when you passed the carriage house or went past the property office, it kind of got, kind of dim, you couldn't turn it up any louder.
But remember, we're gonna be putting two more speakers on the other side. And again, that's, I just, that's up to y'all. You got two more speakers on the other side in those two big trees, and they would be higher up in the tree, Robert, to be honest with you. But when I, and Robert, when you said that, did you go on the other side and listen on the other side of Wick's Jewelry?
I did.
Okay. I just had several people say they thought it sounded good, so I...
Well, it sounded good, but, but the issue I was looking at was the fact that when, when it was being, being tried up there, there were hardly anybody, nobody on Main Street.
Right.
Didn't have any talking, didn't have any, any activities going on, so of course, it was pretty well an open evening, but he had it up as loud as it could go.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Is he telling you the range, what is he saying, like, how far should it go, down to the traffic light?
Well, we're, no, no, it's not gonna go to the traffic light right now. It's gonna be right in front of the courthouse, that's where it's gonna be, it's gonna be just right there, and then we've got to go with it further down the, on each side. So what we just wanted, something like, you know, the sound system, when you have, when you do the, when people were sitting up there on the stage, it's pretty much right there as well.
He does not have a, since he's, now we're just doing the sound, is he anyplace around where he's got the sound system hooked up somewhere? Because this is not new, or do you know anything?
No, I, I, Robert, I didn't ask him that, I'll be honest with you. I know he's been, okay, let me just say what you just asked about, he's been in business twenty-five years, and the other, Universal Concepts been in business thirty-five years. Now, it was under a different name.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm, well, I'll just leave it at that.
Well, me and you were raised in the times when you turn, when you turn the amplifier up, you rattle the windows on purpose.
Exactly, I understand too. And I don't know if he can adjust that with another amplifier on there, I just don't know that, I didn't ask that question. I would assume he could, but I don't know how much more that would be.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to put you all on the spot again, I'm just trying to get something for Christmas, and...
I know, I know.
And it's just, it's, you know...
But I'd like to, personally, you know, have him install it, I'm, we're kind of taking a gamble, because I don't know if it's gonna be loud enough to do what he's trying to do with what I, what I experienced Sunday night.
Right.
You could actually hear it real well in front of Wick's, I went over there, and it sounded good over there. Was it up as full as...
He said it was.
Yeah, he had it up loud, yeah.
He said it was.
I was thinking he said it was just up a small amount, was that earlier?
He told me, yes, it was earlier, and then he turned it up, but then again, or Robert, when we went across the street, I don't know if it was turned all the way up then or not. And I know he did turn it all the way up, and he might have turned it down, but I don't know that for sure.
That traffic would make a bit of difference.
Is this something that we need to vote on, or is it within your authority?
It's, it's within my authority, but I would like to have y'all's approval on it. I mean, I, it's, it's over ten grand, which I can go up to twenty, but, but I want to be sure we get...
Well, and Robert, to be honest with you, if you, if you want some more details, but I don't want to, I don't want to delay the response to get us to doing where we are, and I can get him here, and we can maybe do something else to maybe see with the sound.
Let me, can I talk to him tomorrow?
Sure.
If, if the board will let me, let me talk to him tomorrow.
Okay.
And if we have, we'll go uptown.
Okay.
And tomorrow, Saturday, we'll see what we can, I'm just, I'd like to see how loud it's gonna be, I mean, I don't want...
I understand, I understand. That'd be good.
It is.
Pass over there, if I may. Now, the question about that is, if, if it does make the quality of your sound that you think, what do we have to do to make sure we get to, I mean, I'm just trying to push it too. I'd like to have it in place so we have, when we have the parade.
If they, if they trust my decision, and we can get it up there, we could have, we could have a check by, by Monday.
That's fine, that's fine.
If, if, you know, if we get it up, up to where we're headed.
Exactly, okay.
Speaking of having anything there in front of the courthouse, is there gonna be any special things we're gonna need to do there?
No, it's gonna be all...
Speaking of anything?
No, well, and he can have that adaptable, yes, for what he told me, but most everything's gonna be on the ground, he's gonna do all that so you won't see it.
I've never been up there when you could hear anything, haven't been.
Well...
I agree.
Of course, I ain't been in a long time. If I can get him, me and him to put up something...
Do you want me to see if he would put it up there, like we did the other day?
Well, you don't need to go to that loud, don't need to light, we just need some sound.
No, I'm just talking, I'm talking about sound.
And, and maybe I can get Jerry or Becky one, if they would want to come up there with me, we'll set up a time, we can get up there and just listen to it, see if...
So let me do this, I will fly to him tonight, you let me know when you're about to get together, and I'll tell him he needs to be there.
I'm pretty well free all day tomorrow.
Pretty much.
So I mean, I can, I can...
So you just tell me what time you want me, you just let me know.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep. The afternoon would be a little, is morning or afternoon better for you?
Uh, when we shoot for, when we shoot for two o'clock?
Okay.
One or two o'clock, and that, we'll shoot for, that way we've got traffic going, we can see what's going on.
Sure, exactly.
And he needs to, he needs to put on his dog and pony show, I'll tell him.
I'm gonna, and now, okay, I might have to make sure you go get the thing too, but I'll, I'll just tell him he needs to go over, he's got, he's gotta go to this place and get it tomorrow, I don't know if he still had it, he was gonna go to Blue Ridge to do another thing up there, but anyway, I'll make sure he's got it.
What's he got in Blue Ridge?
He's, he's gonna do a...
The same thing up there?
He's gonna do something up there also.
Well, you already got that in Blue Ridge to stop?
No. Now, to what extent he's doing up there, I don't know, but I just know he said he was going to do a presentation for them also.
Yeah. All right.
So two o'clock tomorrow. Yeah, I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna check with him, make sure he gets the product, I will text you or call you tonight and let you know.
Yeah, you call me, I, you got my cell phone number.
Yes, sir, okay.
And then I can get Becky, Ms. Denier, Mr. Barnes, tomorrow sometime, she will shoot up with us.
First of all, I want to thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to come and talk to y'all, and doing this, and giving us the opportunity to do this, and I really appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thanks, Jack.
Yes, thank you.
All right. All right, now that's gonna bring us down, I'm sorry.
They finished today.
So they don't have court?
Well, they'll have some small sessions, but the trial's ended, so you...
I just kind of wondered about court, no, in case y'all wasn't, I mean, I don't know, I'm not saying one way or the other, I just was throwing that out there, in case there was court tomorrow, and we're blaring music and... That's a thought, maybe they'll hurry up and get the court done. Let's go to item number five, under employee, employee recognition, I'm gonna turn this item over to Ms. Denier.
Yes, and I am very excited about this, this is a big one. Twenty years, Carrie Eastwood, come on up. We owe you a lot of gratitude. Okay, so you're with the nine-one-one.
Hi.
And you've been there how many years, twenty? And how are the call numbers when you started compared to now?
A whole lot.
Slone, you wanna come on up also?
Yeah, we'll let you go.
We'll let you.
Just don't get under the light.
I know, it'd be too much to wear, wouldn't it?
Congratulations, we appreciate you very much.
Put your hair.
Sure.
How you got one?
Looks good. On your way.
All right.
Thank you. Catching up with you.
Hello. Thank you.
You gonna go?
She's gonna fix it.
All right, that finishes up on the floor, now we're going down to, let me know, item number, item number six, consent agenda. We signed a proclamation for the Retired Educators Day in Georgia. Oh, let's see. Whereas the Governor of State of Georgia has proclaimed the day of Sunday, November 5th, 2017, as Retired Educators Day in Georgia, whereas there are more than one hundred and twenty-one thousand retired educators in Georgia, twenty-eight thousand plus of whom are members of the Georgia Retired Teachers Association, and whereas retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service and make invaluable contributions to the welfare of the respective communities across the state, and where it is, it is appropriate that a day be designated for citizens to express their appreciation for the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of human lives and for, and for society, and whereas local churches will recognize those lasting contributions made by retired educators in the community. Now therefore, I, Robert P. Jones, of Pickens County Commissioner, do hereby proclaim the day of November 5th, 2017, Retired Educators Day, and I call upon the citizens of Pickens County to observe that day in appropriate manner honoring retired educators, given unto my hand at Jasper, Georgia, on this third day of November in the Lord of 2017. That has been done. And then the next one, we signed a proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. All right, whereas the Native American settlements were established in Northwest Georgia as early as three hundred and thirty-five hundred B.C. Were as evidence of the presence in this, and then later, the presence in this area included settlements, battlegrounds, memorial sites, and pictographs, and whereas the names of the current rivers, mountains, and places such as the Amacola, the Etowah, Talking Rock, Coussa, validated Native Americans' presence in Northwest Georgia, and whereas the documents supported evidence of trade between Native Americans and European settlers, and whereas the Old Federal Road was used to remove the local tribes to Oklahoma in the eighteen hundreds. Now therefore, I, Robert P. Jones, Chairman of the Pickens County Board of Commission, do hereby proclaim November 2, 2017, as Native American Heritage Month. I encourage all residents to honor Native American contributions to our nation's history and future endeavors, in witness thereof, here unto set my hand this thirty-first day of October 2017. That have been taken care of.
I should have put scare corner on there, I think.
Yeah, scare corner, I forget, didn't I? Which ain't done up here. All right, that brings us down to item number seven, under old business. Ms. Lisa, do we have any old business?
There is none.
There is no old business, all right? That brings us down to item number eight, under new business. The proposed fiscal year of 2018 budget, this time I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Fay Harvey.
In the small packet that you have, excuse me, on the very front page is the, the actual advertisement that we will be going to run in the paper for next week, and it advertises a public hearing, which will be at nine-thirty before, prior to our December 7th work session, and then the, the budget should be adopted at the Board of Commissioners meeting on Thursday, December 21st. The, the general fund revenues totaled twenty-six million, thirty-seven thousand, eight sixty-five, as do the expenditures. There is, in the contingency line, and that's shown in, on the next worksheet that we have, we have four hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred forty dollars in contingency. Also in the advertisement is the criteria funds or the enterprise funds budgets. The water revenues and expenditures are two million, two fourteen, two ten, and the airport revenues and expenditures are four hundred forty thousand, four fifty. The, the project length, project length budget for capital projects, which is the SPOS budget, it's a six-year budget, it was, it shows the total estimated collections at thirty million, and then how those are dispersed between the Pickens County departments and the cities. And that is my total advertisement.
All right, Ms. Fay, you need a moment, second, to go ahead and give you the authority to go ahead and advertise this place?
To advertise, yes.
Show move.
Second.
Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favorite number saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. You have got the authority to do so, Ms. Fay. All right, that brings us down to, under item B is bid packages for Fire Station Number Twelve, that's the new fire station out there at Salacoa, the bid packages are going out. There's been approximately four packages that went out, and we have got a pre-construction conference Monday at one-thirty, and if these four, four companies are wanting to bid on this thing, they have to be at that pre-bid conference. And then once that is approved, and they got about two more weeks to bring in the...
December 4th at one-thirty, I believe, on Monday is when the bid opening will be.
Okay, December 4th, one-thirty. All right. That being said, does anybody have any questions on those items? And that is a turnkey project, which means that the building will be completely, completely done, paving around the building, only thing that's waiting on is we're looking at building a tornado shelter in the back of that property, and we're looking at some grants from the feds, I believe, on that.
That's a link down here.
All right, I'm seeing now, all that being said, we have been, we have been asked to bring some roads back, I think one of the roads we've talked about in the past, but since, since it's getting close to where we got another road that's been requested, I thought it'd be appropriate to go ahead and see if maybe if we could do two roads at one time, since we've got to have open meetings on road closures. We've had a, we've had a request from the, from the citizens in the area to close Sandy Bottoms Road, which is a road that is a dead end at the Green Barn, it hasn't been county-maintained for quite a few years. Matter of fact, I can't remember when the county, it's just an old farm road, and the county hasn't maintained it, I imagine, since the early eighties, if not the late seventies. So then we've got a request to close that one, and also Pleasant Union Extension. That road, we've had a request by the families, again, we've discussed that about a year and a half ago, it kind of fell off the radar on account of there's a water line that runs down the middle of the road, and we have, I would recommend that the fact that if we do proceed with the open meetings and close that small section of road to close it off, that we need to get a, an easement to where we can work on that water line. My question to the county attorney, since the county owns the road, can't the county write their own self an easement and then, then close the road? Because we shouldn't, since it's already our road.
Protect the place.
Yeah. Should have had to deal with the property owners on each side, since the road already belongs to the county, we should be able to do our own easement, and then, then proceed with the functions to do that. Now, all that being said, I would like to, if, with the commissioner's approval, let's go ahead and give the attorney the authority to start working on the process to close these two roads. Show move. Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favorite number saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right, Mr. Landon, you have got that done. Now that brings us down to item number nine, under financial report, and at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Harvey again.
Okay, thank you. The financial report that I have in front of you is for the period ending October 31st, and that is three months of our fiscal year. Expenditure budget should not exceed eighty-three percent. For, on the revenues, the total revenue collected through October 31st is thirteen million, five hundred eighteen thousand, five eleven, and that's fifty-two point nine four percent. Expenditures for general government function is, the expenditures are two million, six hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven fifty-eight, and that's seventy-six point three percent. For the judicial, courts and judicial system, expenditures were two million, six hundred fifty-nine thousand, three twelve, and that's seventy-three point sixty-one percent. For public safety, expenditures are nine million, nine hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred sixteen dollars, and that is seventy-seven, that's zero six percent. For the public works department, expenditures were two mil, two million, five hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred thirty-four dollars, and that's seventy-eight point one two percent. For the health department, the seniors center and MATS program, expenditures are five hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars, and that's sixty-nine point two seven percent. For culture and recreation, expenditures are seven hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars, and that's seventy-eight point seventy-five percent. For housing and development, expenditures are four hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars, and that's seventy-one point nine six percent. So overall, for the general fund, the total expenditures are nineteen thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars, and three, four hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred forty dollars, and that's seventy-six point three percent. For the enterprise funds, the water department is at one million, eight hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred sixty dollars, that's eighty-six point five percent. For the airport, expenditures are two hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine, and that's seventy-three point six one percent. We did have some collections of, on the revenue side, our biggest, of course, our biggest budget line item is the property tax, and even though the, I think the tax notices went out early in October, we could... Not, not really, since the budget, the budget workshops that we had.
Okay, all right. Any further questions for Ms. Harvey?
Next, go.
All right. Uh, thank you, Ms. Fay. That brings, or you, go ahead. Um, Mr. Landon's got a, got another meeting to go to, so we're going... I guess I'll see you tomorrow. All right, that brings us down under item ten under action items. Um, item A, uh, we need to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting on October nineteenth, twenty-seventeen. Uh, y'all should have got a copy, uh, through email on that. I need a move in a second to approve these.
Sure.
Set that.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favor, no one saying aye?
Aye.
Any post, thank you. That's got that. All right. Then, uh, we have a work session meeting on November second, twenty-seventeen. You all should have received a copy of that from Ms. Lisa. Uh, need a move in a second to approve those.
Set that.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favor, no one saying aye?
Aye.
Any post, thank you. That's got that. All right. Then, uh, we have a work session meeting on November second, twenty-seventeen. You all should have received a copy of that from Ms. Lisa. Uh, need a move in a second to approve those.
Set that.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favor, no one saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody posed? So be it. Thank you. Those have been approved. All right, that brings us down. We have no rezon request, is that correct? All right. Water department, uh, bids for the work vehicle. Philip, you got the bids for the work vehicle?
I've done a turn of mine.
All right.
I have approval after work session.
We got, um, one here from, uh, from General Motors, uh, Dave Chevrolet, thirty thousand, nine sixty-one. Uh, Shaw Kirk Ford, thirty thousand, three oh nine. And you got one from Dodge?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, here it is. The one from Chrysler Dodge here in town was, uh...
Thirty-eight.
Well, that's one I'm looking at. I guess either, it's either.
Thirty-eight or thirty-seven.
Thirty, well, manufactured is fourth, forty thousand, seven sixty-five, and FWP is thirty-eight, nine sixty-one. Is that the one?
Yeah, that one.
Pardon?
That's too much.
All right, so we got, go this one more time. That's got, uh, looks like we got, golly darned. All right, the Chevrolet is thirty thousand, nine sixty-one, and the Ford is thirty thousand, three oh nine. So, Shaw Kirk has beat Dave's by approximately three hundred dollars. Is that what I'm seeing here?
Six hundred.
Six hundred dollars?
Six hundred and fifty-eight.
Oh, six hundred dollars, yeah. All right. All right, and all three of these vehicles are sisters, in other words, eggs for eggs.
Yeah.
Old-fashioned roll-up windows, rubber made.
No, it's hard to get roll-up windows anymore. You know, we look at, I mean, you get, it's all, most of them is a way, power windows and power locks.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's... Yeah, they don't have power because all vinyl and leather sheet.
All right, so what you're needing from us is to give you authority to go ahead and get this thing.
And I have the money in the, in my contingency, so...
So, you've got money in your contingency. And what are you going to do? Are you replacing a vehicle?
Yeah, I'm going, we're going to have, we'll have a spare Ford, I mean, that way if the road department needs it or the red department needs it during snowstorm or whatever, because they're always borrowing it, getting back and forth over the shoulder. So, we're just going to keep it as a spare pilot car, you know? Somebody needs it, it'll be there between us and the road department and red department or whoever needs it.
You're not trading out a vehicle, you're straight out buying one?
Yeah, just straight out buying. Because they weren't going to give it like twenty-eight hundred dollars for it. So, I mean, it's just, just as well to keep it as it was to give it up.
All right, we got a, we got Jasper Jeep at thirty-eight, nine sixty-one. We got General Motors, uh, Dave Chevrolet at thirty thousand, nine sixty-one, and then we've got Shaw Kirk Ford at thirty thousand, three oh nine. What y'all's pleasure.
Which vehicle did you prefer? Did you have a preference?
I prefer the Chevrolets. That's just, I mean, that's what we've had, but, I mean, going with the price, I mean, I'm, six hundred dollars, I mean, I'll go with whichever, whichever one.
The last one you got, what was it, Chevrolet or Ford or Dodge?
What, the last pickup we got was a Dodge.
Before that?
Ford.
Before that?
Ford.
You know?
Yeah.
Well, you got two Fords and a Dodge, there's time you bought for six hundred dollars. You want to go ahead and get a Chevrolet?
Big decision.
Mm-hmm. Can you cover the extra six hundred dollars for a Chevrolet?
I can.
Now, back to, back, back to you two, what's y'all's preference? All three of these dealerships are in Pickens County. All three of them pay taxes. You bought two Fords and a Dodge, and we haven't bought a Chevrolet, so...
We've bought a Chevrolet since two thousand and...
About time they had a good one.
Yeah.
Hey, first time we've...
Not, I mean, the road department had, but we, as far as us, we hadn't bought a Chevrolet since the last service took it, bought the last Chevrolet service took it, bought.
Okay.
And you have enough in your contingency, the six hundred.
The warranty and all is the same, pretty much so?
Yeah.
I'm betting.
With what?
With the Chevrolet.
Okay, well, I need a move in a second.
So moved.
All right, have a move in a second. That gives you authority to buy Chevrolet, since we bought two Fords and a Dodge, and we're so close with the price between the Ford and Chevrolet, we'll go with the Chevrolet. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all, uh, all that favor, let me know by saying aye?
Aye.
None post, thank you.
Thank y'all.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right.
Spread the wealth.
Spread the wealth. All right, we have a, um, text amendment for chapter six of the alcoholic beverages. You want to give us a quick explanation? You've got exactly thirty seconds.
Yes, sir. Um, it's one quick item regarding new applications, and this contains certain state-required language that we have to have in our county code of ordinance. This county attorney is aware of it, and he and I recommend approval.
Yeah, he, he just mentioned to me, he did not, he knew about it, did not have an issue with it and thinks it does need to be. Is it, this exhibit says, applications, um, six, seven, here it is, right here. Is it the one, item D, as a prerequisite to the insurance of any such new licensed applicant shall furnish a complete set of fingerprints to be forwarded to the Georgia Bureau, uh, Georgia Bureau Investigations, which shall search the files of the Georgia Crime Information Center for any instance of criminal activity during the two years immediately preceding